My writ of certiorari. Appeals of decision from the Historic Zoning Commission pursuant to the provisions of 2.68.030 or the Metropolitan Code of Laws notice is hereby given that a final hearing before this commission is appealable to the Chancery Court of Davidson County or the Circuit Court of Davidson County via a statutory writ of certiorari. Your advice is seek your own independent legal counsel to ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements are met. You should also seek independent legal advice regarding the applicability of the writ of certiorari to the specific decision of the Historic Zoning Commission. First, do we have a meeting minutes? Have a motion to approve last month's meeting minutes?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay. So, first, the consent agenda and you're all going to move on.
I'm just going to abstain.
Okay, I'm abstaining, okay. Items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda.
Chairperson, we would like to request that 1311 Shelby be moved to consent unless there's someone here who'd like to speak against. 13 Shelby.
Okay, is anyone in the audience?
1311 Shelby.
Is anyone in the audience who wants to speak against 1311 Shelby? Okay, we'll move that to the consent agenda.
There are several items on the consent agenda. The first one is 104 Fifth Avenue South, and that's an application for signage. The second is 3618 Westbrook, and that is an application for an addition. 1515 Gale Lane is an application for an addition. 3828 Whitland Avenue is an application for an outbuilding with a setback reduction. 1209A Dallas Avenue is an application for an addition. 1309 Forest Avenue is an application for partial demolition and an addition as well. And other alterations. 1703 Primrose is an application for an addition. 413 North 16th Street is an application for an addition and an outbuilding. 2203 Grantland is an application for demolition of an outbuilding and new construction of a new outbuilding that requires a setback reduction. 3514 Central Avenue is an application for new construction for an addition and with a setback reduction. And on that one, just wanted to note that we received just before leaving the office an email in support of the project or basically from the neighbors saying, they didn't go so far as to say support, but they said they have no objection whatsoever to the setback reduction. 2607 Oakland Avenue is an application for partial demolition and construction of addition in an outbuilding with a setback reduction. 1517 Paris Avenue is an application for a detached accessory dwelling unit. 811 Boscabel is an application for an addition. And then finally, 1311 Shelby is an application for infill that requires a setback reduction.
Okay, thank you. First, any questions to staff? Okay, anybody in the audience have any questions or anything about any of these that are on consent agenda? Okay, closed public hearing. All in favor of approving?
I'm going to just remind the abstaining from the consent agenda.
Gotcha, thank you. All motion to approve?
Move, move.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Okay, consent agenda is approved. Okay, the first new business is, I've got my glasses, say, 1620 Holly Street.
Actually, I think the first order business are the design guidelines.
Oh, okay.
That's all right. Recently, the mayor's office charged a committee with updating the signage guidelines for the downtown code area, which of course includes Broadway, Second, and some of our landmarks. And we were taken out of that so that we would have the opportunity to revise that to fit our design guidelines essentially. So, a committee is met, the mayor put together a committee, it included Commissioner Mosley representing the MHCC, representative from the mayor's office, codes department, planning, MDHA, Chamber of Commerce, the district, a local sign company, and a local business owner. And they came up with the design guidelines that are before you. The signage section is essentially the same in all three documents except for Broadway that just has one little difference, and that is that in some cases there is the allowance for neon that flashes and chases. Otherwise, they're all the same. And we wanted to take this opportunity to make a few other little housekeeping changes, mainly to Second Avenue. So, there's some additional text outside of the signage chapter that you'll see in green. This text is taken from the Broadway guidelines, which go into a little more detail. And just an example of the kind of changes that are in Second Avenue. Both documents require that, say, a cornice or a kick plate or storefront needs to be retained. And then that, in Second Avenue, it stopped there, but in Broadway, it would give additional information, like what do you do if the original element's no longer there? What do you do if it's beyond repair? So, we've taken that additional guidance and added it to Second Avenue, too. So, it doesn't change the guidelines, it doesn't change what's been happening, it's what you've been doing already. It just provides further clarification for an applicant. But mainly, the signage chapter is the one that's changing. And I believe that there's someone from our committee here to speak unless you had any questions for me.
Questions?
Thank you.
Do we need to make a motion, everything to approve it, or is that part of it?
We will, but we'll have some people to speak, I believe.
So, anyone from the committee that would like to speak on or behalf?
If you want to ask questions, I'm happy to.
There may not be anyone to speak.
Okay. All right.
I will just, having been on the committee, and one of the things that Robin brought up was, we've had some question before, neon and chasing lights and something, it was a matter of discussion, and I think through that discussion, one of the things we wanted to, or one of the things that was, you know, at length discussed is the unique character that Broadway has and that we want to continue to permit that to occur, but to, you know, to remain unique about Nashville. And so, that's why you see that change and something that, as a group, we, you know, worked hard to kind of come up with something that made sense, that was sensitive both to the district but also was unique in the character of what exists there and unique to Nashville.
Thank you. Any other comments from anyone? Okay, motion to approve the design guidelines?
I'll move.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, design guidelines are approved. Okay, now to new business, 1620 Holly Street.
For this project, the applicant requests a rehearing of a project that was reviewed and decided on by this commission at the February regularly scheduled meeting. The proposal was heard by the commission on February 20th, 2013, and denied based on the fact that the project did not meet the requirements for new construction and additional information was necessary to determine whether the proposed addition could be structurally accomplished before the guidelines could be applied. The applicant had the choice of appealing the decision in court, submitting a new application, or requesting a rehearing. Through his attorney, the applicant requested a rehearing that did not include new evidence that could not have been presented at the February 2013 meeting as required by the commission's policies for rehearings. The applicant did not participate in the original hearing as he was not present and therefore is not eligible to request a rehearing as again stated by the policy. A request for rehearing shall be acted upon by the motion of a member of the board who voted in the majority to disapprove the case, and those commissioners were Rose Cantrell, Samuel Champion, Hunter G., Erin Kalberg, and Ben Mosley. So, any of those commissioners may now make a motion to rehear the case or to deny the request for a rehearing. And we are prepared to present the case again this month if you do choose to rehear.
So, let me just be clear. So, the commissioners that wrote in against it, whoever is attendance now, they can make a motion to rehear it and we?
Or to not.
Or not, okay. And then they make a motion and we vote on it, or if they make a motion, it happens?
Yes.
Okay. And do you mind reading it out one more time? I think was Ben the only one that was still here, or?
And Ms. Cantrell.
Ms. Cantrell, okay. Okay, would either Ben or Ms. Cantrell, would either of you like to make a motion to rehear this case?
Just have a question for staff. My memory is foggy, I recall it but not in detail. Is, what was, because there was no one present and to respond to staff's comments of disapproval, on what basis, I guess, did we give some specificity in the motion to disapprove?
It was because there was not enough information to determine whether the proposed addition could be structurally accomplished. It's an existing one-story, non-contributing building. They wanted to add a full second story. Staff didn't feel like that could be accomplished, and so they asked for an engineering report. And then there was additional information about different details that were a concern and the reason for recommendation for disapproval.
And then to clarify, if I heard you correctly, staff is prepared, having reviewed the case and reviewed these documents, if a motion is made to rehear that?
Correct.
We are prepared to rehear that, okay?
Yes, we have the same presentation as last time.
Very well. I'll move.
I'd like to clarify.
Sure.
What I'm hearing here is that there's no, it's exactly the same case as was before.
Correct.
No new evidence.
Correct.
We don't have the engineer's report.
Correct.
So, it's exactly the same issue with nothing new before us. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
Okay, would either of you like to make a motion to rehear this case?
Well, I'm going to make a motion. I'm going to make a motion that since it's the same thing, we've already heard it before, there's no new evidence before us, that it not be reheard on the basis of, on the basis of the staff recommendation.
Okay, so we, so motion, so we make a vote, right? Okay.
You need a second.
Yeah, okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Aye. Okay, motion carries, we will not re-listen to 1620 Holly Street. Okay, the next new business is 4911 Park Avenue.
For this project, the applicant proposes to demolish a nonhistoric rear addition at 4911 Park Avenue in order to meet Metro Planning's requirements to subdivide the corner lot and request a rear setback reduction for the existing building. The applicant proposes the subdivision in order to construct a new building facing 50th Avenue North. The new building is not proposed at this time as the lot cannot be subdivided until the setback reduction has been approved. The one-story addition on the rear of this two-story home is not historic, and that's evidenced by the materials and the design. So, staff does recommend that it be removed. You'll see in your staff recommendation that there is also a recommendation of a condition that the applicant present new drawings to show how that rear wall will be treated, and they've already done that, and it's very appropriate. For the subdivision, a rear setback reduction is needed. Currently, the proposed property line runs through the existing rear addition. Once the addition is removed, the existing building will have a rear setback of six feet and nine inches rather than the required 20 feet of bulk zoning. Such a minimal setback would not be appropriate for the overlay. Therefore, the planning department intends on requiring a 20-foot left-side setback for the proposed new building, which allows the existing building to appear as if it has the appropriate setback. Staff recommends requiring the same. This would be a no-build area, meaning the current or future owners would not be able to construction, construct an addition or a structure within this area. With these requirements, a setback reduction can meet the guidelines adopted by the commission for setback reductions in that the perceived setback will match the historic context. But determine whether or not the setback reduction is appropriate, the commission should also consider the appropriateness of new construction in the form of a primary dwelling on the back of this lot. It was not unusual for the back of a corner lot to be subdivided historically, but the later house that was constructed, as seen in this example, was typically subordinate to the existing building. An example of this is at 30646 Avenue North with a smaller home behind it at 4600 Nevada. Using the information of this and other examples like this and the immediate context, staff determined that a new building should be between 21 and 24 feet tall with a front setback of approximately 23 feet and a width of 26 to 32 feet. The new building should also read as a one- or one-and-a-half-story home and follow the form of the historic buildings in the overlay. MHCC and planning staff do not recommend additional curb cuts on Park Avenue or 50th Avenue North since there is an existing alley. The proposed scenario does not allow for off-street parking since, parking for the existing building. So, with these requirements, staff recommends approval of the setback reduction. And let me give you that full summary. Staff recommends approval of demolition of the rear addition, finding demolition of this portion to be the building, of the building to be consistent with the design guidelines for appropriate demolition, and approval of the rear setback reduction with the following conditions for the newly created lot to assure its compatibility with the context of the neighborhood and the design guidelines. That a buildable area be created with a 20-foot left setback, 23-foot right setback, 23-foot front setback, and a 20-foot rear setback, consistent with the planning department's requirements. The left setback area be a no-build area, consistent with the planning department's requirements. No curb cuts be added to Park Avenue or 50th Avenue North, and all vehicular access be from the alley, and no construction in existing or newly created front or side yards for either building. With these conditions, staff finds the project to meet the design guidelines for demolition and setback reduction, and the applicant is here if you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, thank you. Open public hearing. Well, first, the applicant, would the applicant like to come forward?
I've got one quick question.
Oh, sure.
Staff, the site plan is showing an existing concrete pad, 20 by 20, in what would be the front yard of the building footprint, and I noticed the conditions are that no construction would take place there?
That's correct.
Our car is going to be, I mean?
It's existing, so there's not a lot we can do about it, but it was a foundation for a former structure, so I'm not sure if it really can be accessed with a car. But again, it is existing.
Cars are going to be parked in the front yard. Okay.
Okay, would the applicant like to come forward?
I'm here if there's any questions and recording that.
Just, we had come to the front and state your name and address.
My name is Drew Buchanan. I appreciate the opportunity to address the commission. If you have any other questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them. Other than, but to address the parking issue that just came up, we have not fully developed a landscape plan, but I don't think that we would park cars in the front yard.
And you've reviewed the comments with staff and you're?
I have.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, would anyone else in the audience like to come forward and talk regarding
We're neighbors, so we're more curious, we're kind of curious to make sure that this is going to add to the neighborhood. I actually live in the house exactly behind this property. I think you guys left it.
Sure, my name is?
I'm sorry, state your name and add.
Sorry, my name is Ann McGoren, and I live at 4910 Elkins Avenue, the property immediately behind this property. And I've lived there for 17 years. So?
And she's an architect.
And this is?
My name is Sandy Moss, M-O-S-S. I live at 4909 Elkins Avenue, which is directly across the street from Ann's house.
So, I guess, the concern I have in looking at the site plan is, I understand about the structures, and it was great to get the clarification of all the details, but when you put a fence, and why, why didn't they split the difference between the two properties to do the property line? That's, there's just some questions I have about that.
That's actually a good question. The property line was determined in order to get the appropriate square footage in the new lot that met the codes for subdividing the lot. So, that's how that, where that line came into play. Does that help?
Yeah, and there is no, and there is no ability for any outbuildings around either of the properties.
And I don't see any possibility of that. There's no room left for them to be in an appropriate location.
Okay.
But, I mean, ultimately, that would be a decision of the commission if something were applied for.
Okay, and then, one other question I had was, is, is the party developing the property, the homeowner or a developer?
And that's a question for the applicant.
Just for the record, yeah, do you mind coming forward, just saying? Sorry about that, just?
I'm Victor Hazelwood, I'm the owner. It would be, it would probably be sold to a contractor that would build a building that runs parallel and meets with their guidelines. They've got, and of course, anything they build there has got to meet historic guidelines and everything, materials, look, the fit, everything. So, it would be a professional contractor that is obviously licensed to do this.
So, you're planning to live in the main house?
No, that would be rehabbed. That would be rehabbed, and so it's, the interior of the house is pretty rough, and so we've got to do a total rehab on that and sell it.
Then you're planning on doing that?
Yes.
Okay.
And obviously, that then, when there's a plan that comes before the plan, yeah?
The rehab of the existing structure, the interior, I don't think they really look at it. They do monitor the exterior, obviously, they would have to.
I have a question for Robin about that, because I've, I've seen you do reports on historic buildings that you've had to go in and say, okay, they can raise it because they got all kinds of basement problems. And I know that house has all kinds of problems. What restrictions, how, should that house be condemned? And they say that we can't rehab it. Would a new structure on that lot?
Oh, Sandy, see, I know Sandy. That one we can't, that question, will, could we talk about that one after the meeting?
Yeah, because it's really just a question for staff.
Yeah.
We haven't inspected that house.
Yeah.
So, I can't answer that.
Well, it's actually just a question of your guidelines.
Yeah.
Having nothing to do with?
Yeah, you guys, you can call them, and those are the kind of questions they can answer better afterward.
Okay.
Is that it?
Were there any other observations?
No.
She had an observation.
No, I guess, I'm just, I'm concerned. I want to add value to the neighborhood, and so that, that's why I want to be here and just say that I'm, I'm concerned about what happens to this property. I've looked at it for a long time. I want it to be improved. I'd love for people to be living in it, families, neighbors, but, but I'm concerned about the setback requirements and, and how close those property lines become, because although we don't have a neighbor without buildings, and 17 years when we moved in, we didn't have fences, now we do, and the fences are eight feet tall, and I think that that'll create the character for whatever these lots end up being, too.
Well, thanks a lot. Anyone else like to speak?
I have a further clarification for staff. As to guidelines, I believe if, if, for some clarity on the fence, if Lot 2, future owner puts up apartments on the house that were a tall rear yard fence, it would be at least to the midpoint of that structure back.
Well, we don't review fences in this neighborhood, so that will be up to the codes department to review. And my understanding from planning is, if it's subdivided, they're going to make a requirement that that be a no-build area on the left side of that house.
Which would include fences.
Which would mean everything from what I understand.
Okay.
Okay, closed public hearing, some discussion, any other discussion? Motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt staff recommendation on 4911 Park Avenue.
Might, might offer some clarity on the fences? Or make a comment?
Sure.
Uh, we need a second.
We need a second.
Do you like to amend the?
Yeah, a motion, motion to amend, I'd further like to stipulate that if a fence is associated with either property, particularly Lot 2, that, that fence be no closer than the side of the existing dwelling at 4911 Park Avenue, which I don't see an orientation for north, south, east, and west, but it's the side along 50th Avenue that that fence be no closer than the side elevation of the existing dwelling at 4911.
All right, so I think first we have to vote on the, we do vote on the, both motions?
Well, you have, you have a motion, and you have a second to that motion, and that was brought up in the discussion. You could make, you could move to amend the existing motion.
Which you did.
As stated by Mr. Mosley, it would need a second, and then you vote on the amendment, and you vote on the motion.
Okay, all right. Second on the amended?
Second.
Okay. Okay, first, vote, okay, so, all right, so we got a first and a second. All those in favor of the motion?
Amendment.
The amended motion, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Okay, all those opposed? Okay, amended motion carries, yeah. These amended motions, I'll never forget.
Typically, you vote, you vote on the amendment, and then you vote on the full motion, but given the fact that it appeared to be a friendly amendment and there was consensus, then?
We're back as a commission, if we have an amended motion, that we withdraw the original motion.
Yeah, there we go. That'll make, that'll make my life easier.
That would be great.
There's also a third option. Fletcher's keeping me straight there.
Okay, the next one is 1618 17th Avenue South.
Yes. This applicant proposed, the applicant proposes to construct a rear addition and outbuilding. The two-story home was constructed in, around 1915 and is a contributing building to the historic overlay. The project includes the demolition of a rear addition and a nonhistoric side ramp, and where you see the hatched sections is where the demolition will happen. Demo of these nonhistoric elements meets the design guidelines. The project meets the design guidelines in terms of location, height, building shape, roof shape, and orientation. The proportion and rhythm of openings of the majority of the windows on the addition and garage are similar to the existing house, but on the garage's left-side gable field is proposed to be filled with glazing, which creates a collection of windows that does not meet the historic proportions, shapes, and rhythms of, rhythm of openings. Staff recommends that the gable field have one or two rectangular windows with a four-to-six-inch millimetre in between, or that there be no windows, or that there be no windows and dormers could be added. The eve soffits are noted as stucco, which is typically not recommended by stucco manufacturers for horizontal surfaces. Therefore, staff recommends a fiber cement product. The applicant proposes to paint the existing brick and the new brick. Although painting of existing brick is not reviewed in the neighborhood conservation zoning overlays, staff advises not to paint the brick as it will prevent the brick from wicking out water like it's designed to do. Painting of brick can cause splitting and spalling of the historic brick. If painted, staff advises that it should be a water-based stain rather than paint as that allows for the original texture to remain evident, and that the color should match the color of the historic brick. The commission does have the ability to review new masonry materials and colors. Therefore, staff recommends not painting the new brick, and staff providing final review of a brick sample. Staff recommends approval with the conditions that staff provide review of materials, including the final roof color, materials for windows, doors, and posts, and brick and stone samples, the soffits be a cement fiber rather than stucco, the new brick and stone not be painted, the windows within the outbuildings' gable field be removed or replaced with a window that is appropriate in proportion and shape, and the utilities be located beyond the midpoint of the house if a new location is required. With these conditions, staff finds the project to meet the design guidelines for new construction, additions, and outbuildings in the South Music Row Neighborhood Conservation zoning overlay. And the applicant is here if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for staff?
Robin, what's the issue with the glazing at the gable? I know you touched on it, but?
Yes.
Aren't there some leeway on solving things in a modern or contemporary way, or?
Yeah, you can see it here, it just creates windows that don't match the proportion of historic windows or the rhythm of historic windows. So, there's several options. They could do away with windows altogether, they could do away with windows and add roof dormers in order to get light into that space, or they could put in two windows that meet the guidelines that are essentially twice as tall as they are wide. They could do, put in one, or they could put in two.
I thought there was some leniency to, you know, to provide, like I say, modern or contemporary designs to this stuff. Is that not the case?
That's true, as long as that rhythm of openings and the proportion of the openings is similar to the historic. And in this case, we didn't find that there were any windows of this shape, of a triangular shape, or that fill an entire gable field in this way.
If it was solid glass without any millions, I'm just curious.
It still doesn't meet the rhythm of openings or the shape.
Okay, thanks. Any more questions? Thanks, Robin. Okay, would the applicant like to come forward?
My name is Craig Clark. I currently reside at 1127A Glendale Lane here in Nashville, and I'm eager to reside at 1618 17th Avenue South. I'm here with our architect, Tom Carnell, and I appreciate the opportunity to meet with you this afternoon and present our project. I want to start off just briefly by thanking Robin and Melissa, who really did give us a lot of good guidance on the project, and I can say sincerely, although we don't always agree, at the end of the day, I think our project is better for the time we spent together, and that's sincerely heartfelt. So, I want to quickly walk through some slides that we prepared for you, and then we, we do want to respond to some of the staff recommendations. I'm going to let my. I'm going to let my architect speak, he's the expert there. But just to sort of present to the committee how we envision the structures at the end of Music Row. So if we could advance the slide?
Can you give it to the trailer?
Oh, I can advance the slide.
I don't know.
The one to the right?
Mm-hmm.
Excellent. Maybe I can't.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yes, sir.
Are you in agreement or not in agreement with staff recommendations?
We are largely in agreement. There are a couple of points that we'd like to address and have the feedback of the committee. So this is the structure, as Robin pointed out, the existing structure, which was actually the home of a disabled gentleman and it fell into rather severe disrepair. And these two slides are intended to communicate that idea. They're actually vines intruding through the walls to the interior of the home. So part of our excitement doing this project is to renovate the home, restore its structural integrity, but also to build an architecturally and aesthetically constant addition that'll accommodate not only our family of five, we have three boys, 23 and two, so plenty to keep us busy, but also respecting at the same time the historical value of the home. I seem to be... The office project, we propose to build a new office structure. It'll accommodate our outpatient psychiatric practice. I'm a child and adolescent psychiatrist. My wife is a psychologist and we're eager to have a building of our own to work from. And we thought, nothing could be better. Our practice in many ways could be described as a family practice and we thought there could be nothing better than to have it located immediately adjacent to our home. So we've been looking for quite a while to find a place where the zoning would allow for that possibility and we're very excited to be here at this stage of the game presenting to you. We also want to be sure that the design and the orientation of the office is accommodating our triangular lot. Robin spoke to that, I think, and we appreciate that. And the design that we proposed allows us to preserve privacy, not only for ourselves but for our patients, which is important. We were happy to catch a photograph of one of the members of the Carter Group celebrating the winning bid here. This is one of the more junior members, actually it's my son Graydon. And this was the advance team that they sent to survey the site, our son Liam. We believe there will be benefits to the community from our project. It's going to, again, restore this decaying historic home. The urban neighborhood, we believe, we will contribute in a positive way by improving property values, there'll be tax revenues. And again, the historical context of that neighborhood being both business and residential. My understanding is there are only two other families currently residing in it that's become almost exclusively commercial. So we're going to bring a little bit, hopefully, a more family atmosphere back. And we see ourselves as at the crossroads. This is a property that's immediately behind, I guess I should say, to the north of our home, which is, fortunately, we recently learned is going to be renewed, so we're excited about that. And then directly across the street, we find this beautiful, brand-new property. Similarly, 16th note, you know, this large project, which is just at the end of the conservation overlay. So we believe that investment in the community is going to be brought by our project. We're going to live and work on Music Row. We're also going to provide this particular medical service. We know how important that is to Nashville. Child psychiatry is still the most undersupplied specialty in the country and that includes in urban areas. So we're going to have our office located conveniently for a lot of patients. And also, I think we'll bring a clientele to the area that will bolster business in nearby restaurants. We're lucky to enjoy the support of our councilperson. We spoke with Ms. Moore, spoke with Mr. Cobb, who was enthusiastic about our project, and of course, the staff. As I mentioned in response to your question, Mr. Tibbs, or pardon me, Mr. Fletcher, we largely agree and our most important message we want to convey to you this afternoon is we think there's some minor differences with the staff recommendations. But in the spirit of cooperation, our number one goal is to present our reasoning in support of what we're asking for. But if the wisdom of the committee and the commission is that we should make these changes recommended by Ms. Ziegler and others, we're more than happy to do that. We need and want to move forward unencumbered by ongoing interest burden on this project. So would respectfully request your counsel and advice. And again, thank you for your time.
So, very quickly, I guess, one question we, and I'm sorry, I'm Tom Carnell. I'm the architect for this project. And we have the office building coming up next, I do believe, Robin.
Yes.
Right. So, and the comments are very similar on both. Richard, you were talking about the end glass. We were, that's absolutely a personal art studio for Amy. And we were just trying to get more and more of the light in there. And our first idea was to just have it total solid glass with hidden mullions. And so then we tried to put mullions, with Robin's comment, we tried to put, you know, proportion and rhythm of getting that whole eave line in. And if that's not, either one of those aren't acceptable, we'd be glad to work with that and either not do it or do windows that do fit. The other thing is, in terms of cement fiber board, we feel strongly that stucco is a good product. It works under soffits. I've done them many times before and not had a problem with it. We already have that subcontractor on the site and there's nothing wrong with cement fiber board other than sometimes the edges don't get done correctly and it just is not as attractive as, it's less expensive. We'd save some money if we go to cement fiber board, but we would like to take it another degree up. And we're talking about real stucco, not eaves, not, we're talking about Portland cement stucco, so. And then the third item is, our intent is to only stain the brick on the front old portion of the house, not the new brick. New brick, the owner desires to go with all neutral colors in gray. We've counted 22 examples of gray brick in the neighborhood. That's the way we would like to go as representative of the owners. And those are true on both the medical office building and on the house. We're going to use, we're using, the existing stone base will remain the same and the base on the new one will be a matching Ayers Craft stone, which is a very good product. So, no intent to paint or stain those. So, sorry if there was any confusion on that. So, that's all on this one. Most of the comments on the next one will be the same. And thank you. Any feedback on what I've said?
Let me just make sure I was just for us. So you're okay with the gable, but you, I guess that's one thing that you want us to talk about?
Well, yeah, or get some feedback on it.
Okay. And the other was that the brick color, you clarified that, and the soffits, instead of being, and I think we presented eaves, but you're saying stucco is your only, you'd rather do stucco than the cement board, right?
Yes, I'd rather.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I had it re-clarified. Okay, thanks, Tom. Any question to the architect or the owner?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify about the painting of the brick. I wasn't sure I followed that. Your proposal is to, tell me it again, I didn't follow that.
Well, the existing house, Robin, can you-
Yeah, take me back to the-
Yep, there you go. Yes. The existing brick on the house-
Right.
-is an old dark gray, I mean red, red.
That's the brick color.
That's the brick color. They would like to change that color.
And what's the proposal to do it in? What, how are you going to treat it?
You can get a breathable stain color, which she said, which is what we would use.
Okay. Rather than that paint, whether it's a wash or whatever?
Fairness to Robin, we said paint, but our intent was, when we said paint, we meant a coating and we were, we said gray. And so that would be our intent. If the committee agrees with us, that's fine. If they don't, then we'll move on, but-
And I guess, just so I'm clear, because what we're proposing, I think, is to make the entirety of the two structures a medium gray with, pardon me, we're proposing to make the entirety of the two structures a medium gray with a darker gray trim. And I think it's unfortunate the word paint was used because I guess that's been misleading and again, I apologize to you. There are so many details in this, as you all know very well, I'm sure. So our intent was to use a product that would not cause any damage to the existing brick, but to have all the structures match in a medium gray with dark gray trim.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Any more questions? Okay. All right, thanks a lot. Open public hearing. Anyone like to speak on behalf of this project? Okay, closed public hearing, discussion.
Robin, what's your thought on the stain or all of them?
It's hard to say right now because we don't have any samples, but they had mentioned that the new brick would be gray. And that is one thing that you do have the ability to control, is the color of that brick. Typically, the historic brick buildings were red in color. Now, again, they may be talking about a gray that's a red, gray, you know, I don't know. But it may not be possible to get the whole building the gray color they want because the brick, the new brick should be a historic brick color. So that may change what they want to do with the existing house.
We may want to sample, maybe get a sample to see what-
Robin approved it.
Yeah.
And that's typical, that's what you frequently do. My concern is that that color may not be the gray they're thinking of wanting to paint the front part of the house.
So we can, whoever makes the motion, we can make sure of that.
I think it, whatever color, I guess it is in the end, if I heard correctly, that that is a consistent color throughout the project, through both projects. So if it were a brick that we would approve, then arriving at that stain color would be a matter of matching stain, I would guess. But, so the operative piece here is a brick sample that is approvable.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other discussions?
We're just considering the whole right now. I mean-
That's correct. There was mention of a commercial building or office building and that's coming up next.
I realize that, but I mean, we're just talking about the existing building and painting or staining the brick on just this building.
Yes.
Okay. And the argument for the stucco, is that acceptable?
Again, our concern is that stucco has a texture to it that you don't see on soffits. It reads sort of like a masonry material and soffits would be wood. It's not a highly visible part of the building.
You can, if the stucco was flat, smooth finish, would that be okay?
It still has a masonry type of texture to it as opposed to a-
Oh, I see what you're saying. Or some wood.
Yeah, our intent is to make it smooth, Richard. I'm like-
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, what about a motion? Go ahead.
Well, address the windows. I mean, I think Robin's already, I mean, stated what we would like. Is there any discussion on that?
Again, I guess I'm a little bit conflicted here. I know we're not supposed to use the word like, but there are some things that I think they've solved in a little cutting-edge manner that I find acceptable, but, and I thought we've seen projects in the past that do that as well and we're not just confined to make everything not necessarily look alike, but I thought there was some encouragement to do things in a historic way, but sort of in a modern touch. So if that's not the case, then I'm okay with your recommendations, but I didn't know we were, I mean, I guess I'm a little bit conflicted in that thought.
It's a tough one. Where is that line between meeting the guidelines and being modern? But our reading was that the guidelines talk about proportion of windows being matching historic and the rhythm matching historic. So that's where we were coming from with that. Again, not a highly visible portion of the building.
I agree with you that we're in an area that is very, is a very much focal point. And I think that in allowing something like that, we're in an area that we can see this again.
I think along those lines as well, if you look at some of the context that has been infilled, the project doesn't, as presented, doesn't necessarily look out of place. A small, you know, small detail on an outbuilding to the rear, given some of the contextual photographs, like I say, it's a tough call, but I don't know that that particular detail is, I don't find it offensive there. But my finding it offensive, I guess, has little to do with the guidelines. The guidelines were what directed us.
It's kind of like Richard's like.
I just think we need to be very, very careful in our motions so that we're not going to talk setting, press and get into that.
Okay, can I get a motion?
Where does the project lie within, is it near the edge of the boundary?
It is. Those, if you're familiar with Music Row, there's Wedgwood and then there's a little bit of property and then there's a street, Dorothy, that really doesn't do anything but connect 16th and 17th. And then there's another vacant lot for the office building we will be talking about and then this building.
Okay.
I've never known what that street was, but today, Dorothy, I pass it every day, but I didn't know what it was.
It's hardly a street, it's really more like a parking lot.
A little alley.
Yeah, yeah.
So the glass gable is on one-
The north-
The north side only. Where is that in context to the site plan we see here?
So it would be at the top right of this site plan. So again-
It faces the parking lot.
Right there.
Yes.
The applicant is stating that it's facing the parking lot of the building next door.
Who would see that?
It would be very difficult to see.
Okay. I'll take a stab.
All right, go for it.
I move approval based on staff recommendations, except the gable. And I'm comfortable with that remaining as design, given the proximity and location of it in the project. I think I understand, and the brick sample would be subject to approval by staff. And that does include the cement fiber board versus stucco. That would remain.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, the next one is related, 1700 Dorothy Place.
So this one's right next door. It's in a lot you probably haven't even recognized as being a lot because of its odd shape. But the applicant proposes to construct an office building on this vacant corner at 17th Avenue and Dorothy. And this is the elevation facing Dorothy. The project meets the design guidelines in terms of setback, rhythm of spacing, height, orientation and the known materials. The project does not necessarily meet the design guidelines in terms of building shape, however, the proposed shape is necessary because of the shape of the lot itself. And from 17th Avenue, it will appear as a more typical shape for the neighborhood. On the left is the elevation that'll face 17th. And this is the side facing the historic building, so will barely be visible. The roof shape is a side gable form with a pitch of 712, which is in keeping with historic context. The roof dormers are long narrow slits that are shown on one drawing as having a stucco face and on another as having stucco and glazing and are stacked on the wall below. Staff recommends dormers more in keeping with the proportions of historic dormers that are set off the ridge and the wall by a minimum of two feet each, which you've consistently asked for in the past, and have front walls that are predominantly glazing, also has been a consistent requirement. With these conditions, staff finds the project to meet Section 2B1D. The known materials meet the design guidelines, but staff asks that there be a recommendation to have final review of all those materials that are not known just yet. So staff recommends approval with the conditions that staff review, for example, the color of the roof and trim, the materials of the columns and dormers, and that the soffits be a cement fiber product. Utilities be located on the side between the two buildings and beyond the midpoint of the building as it reads from 17th Avenue South or along the alley. And that the roof dormers be more in keeping with the proportions of historic dormers and that they should be set off the ridge and the wall by a minimum of two feet each and the front wall should be predominantly glazing. With these conditions, staff finds the project to meet the design guidelines. And of course, the applicant is here if you have any questions.
Okay. Any questions for staff? Okay. The applicant, you can come forward, both of you, all three of you, doesn't matter. But please, oh, I will say, Tom, if you don't mind, do you mind giving that to Robin first?
First?
Yeah.
First?
Yeah. Make sure it's something that...
Chairperson, this is not new information. This appears to be information to illustrate what they're asking for.
Okay, great, thank you.
I think all the comments are the same as the last one, except for the dormer is the only new comment here, so that's the only one I'm going to address.
Okay.
And so what you see is a dormer in this picture, but cause of the narrowness of the building, we don't have a whole lot of room to make a dormer. But we were trying to just create more breakup in the facade so that it creates more to scale and, and so you didn't have a big, long mass in the front. So anyway, that is very similar to what we're trying to do. It's, you know, the roof comes out, so it appears like the dormer sits back, but because the narrowness of the building, the glass is directly, is directly above the wall. And so, and it's long and narrow. So that's an example in the neighborhood of the same thing, and we would like your feedback or consideration of that. And the rest of the comments, from terms of color and everything, we'll just go with the last recommendation.
Dimension-wise, Tom, what's the height of the glazing, and maybe still some things to be worked out detail-wise there, but would you approximate?
Well, it's probably about a foot. We would actually like to get it up more, but then your roof angle starts getting too low of a slope. We would like to get it as high as possible, but that building, literally, that site is very narrow, and we just don't have that much depth to work with. So if you don't like it the way we're proposing it, we'll probably just get rid of it. And it'll just be a long roof. But we just thought breaking up that roof just added some interest and texture to the building, and that's what we're trying to do. So we'll listen to your feedback and go from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, any questions, more questions to the applicant? Okay, thank you. Anyone in the audience, open public hearing, like to speak. Thank you. Close public hearing.
Is the dormer that we, that you showed the picture of, original dormer, is that, was that added?
This is the first time to see the picture, so we haven't researched that. I don't know.
Okay, we don't know whether it was done...
I don't.
Okay. Just looks odd.
I think to the point of breaking up the unbroken roof facade, even on the, you know, the example house, it certainly accomplishes that. And I think that's the stated, as a stated goal of a kind of long skinny lot, long skinny building, it certainly is doing what it, what it's set out to do.
Yeah, I feel the same way.
In terms of an overall analysis, I mean, that's, what it's setting out to do, it certainly seems to do in terms of just analyzing the facade and the form of the building.
I like, and I agree with that, too. The way it's broken up, I think it works with the facade.
I agree that the design is good. I'm concerned about dormers. I mean, that we have been dealing with dormers a lot, and we don't need another set of guidelines to, or something that comes up that we need to question. I guess my question goes back to, is this, is that really an original dormer that was acceptable in that area, or was that added before it was a historic?
Or maybe a question is, have you seen this type of dormer on any other type of historic building? You don't know about this one, but is it something...
I don't think they've researched it.
No, I know not this one, but in other locations.
We couldn't think of another example like this.
I'm sorry, what?
We couldn't think of another example quite like this.
Okay.
I don't have any questions, I guess. As a comment, you know, you take away the architectural elements, if you look at it in total, it's an abbreviated, long, skinny rectangle by necessity with a cap, a hat on it. And if you take away the articulation of the columns and the punch through the roof, you get a long skinny box with a roof on it. And, you know, while the solutions are not infinite, it certainly is a way, and I guess a mechanism, to make the building have one-third kind of entry over here, and then this articulates a piece. And one question, you know, some of the, working out some of the details of how that 12 inches of glass and all that works, maybe, I think there may be still some development that can happen there. But I guess if we, if it's not okay, we certainly consider, consider the effect of just that long, that long skinny elevation.
I mean, it's very attractive, and it is in the building.
And at the edge of the district.
And it helps break up that mass, and it's a different, you know, because of the mass of this building. But anybody else want to speak on that, or want to get a motion?
I have a question for staff, or maybe a clarification in considering this is a commercial, commercial structure in a transitional or sort of mixed-use neighborhood. Is, in terms of a roof dormer and applying, the facade appears to be more commercial in nature, certainly transitional. Is applying a dormer, typically, would we apply this dormer in the same way in a non-residential use or a non-residential building? I'm just curious what staff's opinion on that would be.
That's a good question. I think typically, commercial buildings don't have a residential form. In this case, because it, it may not be used today as a residential district, but all of the historic buildings are, were originally residential, the form needed to follow that residential form. And so then we get back to looking at the dormers being the same as historic dormers. I will take a second, and I'll do respect to the people who have yet to come up, not to take more time. But we were talking about, where's that line between meeting the guidelines and not copying historic buildings? And I think the columns and the articulation of this building is a good example. The articulation is the same as historic buildings, but the design of it isn't necessarily the same. You see that the pedestal of those pile-ester steps up. That's certainly not something you see. But the articulation of them is something. So I just wanted to throw that out there, and the rhythm of the windows and...
Thank you.
Ron, do you, one of the comments the applicant was that, well, we've got 12 inches of glazing, and certainly in looking at the example, I'm wondering if by the time you kind of construct and pull all this off, if that needs to be a little taller, and we've got, you know, we've got some roof slope issues, that the taller you make it, the less it becomes an individual dormer in a field of roofing. It's a tough, a tough scenario to try to get the best architectural solution to. That's a curiosity, I guess, I have of in, it's one thing in drawing to, and us approve it, and then in practice of construction, to get that slope right, flash it, and get the glazing and everything in there is...
It sounded like the architect was sensitive to that already. I could tell he was already thinking that.
Certainly some detail.
He'd want to get it up higher, but I think he, just by his response to that, kind of understands that.
Yeah.
Because that, when he brought it up, because I was thinking the same thing, and then when he brought up, I was thinking, that's right, we've got the slope to deal with, and he doesn't want to get called back for leaks, so...
Sure, none of us do. Any other discussion?
That's it.
You're on.
All right. I'll move approval with staff recommendations, and that, with the exception of the dormer setback two feet, I would encourage the applicant, or as part of this condition, to, in the final construction documents, to circle back with staff as all that information is, or all the details are worked out of exactly how those dormers work, for just a final review of those materials and how that detail is worked out. In concept, as it's presented, the motion is, I don't have a problem with the dormer and its location, and the general details or general means of construction, but that those final details be reviewed by the staff.
Okay, I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, the next one is 614 Shelby Avenue.
614 Shelby Avenue. In the Edgefield Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay, is currently a vacant lot. At one time, a folk Victorian house stood there, but it was approved for demolition by the commission in 1994. None of you were on the commission at that time. There are one-story folk Victorian houses on the adjacent lots to either side, and actually, the majority of the context, a lot of the context surrounding is the same folk Victorian houses circa 1900. The broader context is primarily, as I said, those folk Victorians. There are also Queen Anne-style houses, craftsmen infill from the 20s and 30s, and there are a few American four-square houses. The majority of the historic houses in the district are one-story, but there are some two-story as well. And here are a few from within that same neighborhood. And the one on the bottom there, 617 Shelby Avenue, is directly across the street from 614, which we're hearing today. Here's another that's not too far away, although it is in a different district. This is in Lachlan Springs, 1115 Forest Avenue. This is actually a multi-family building. It's certainly a duplex now. It may have been originally, and at one time it was several apartments, similar four-square style. The applicant is proposing to construct a new two-family structure on the vacant lot. The proposed new building will be two and a half stories tall, having a form similar to that of an American four-square style house that is seen in the district. The proposed new duplex will have two primary, co-primary front entrances. I guess the picture of the structure being divided down the middle. This is similar to that example on Forest Avenue. The building will be 37 and a half feet tall, 39 and a half feet wide, with an eve height at 23 feet, a 912, 912-pitched hip roof. And although two stories can be appropriate for infill in this lot, staff finds that the proposed massing of this design would be, the massing would be too great. The roof too steep and too tall, and the width greater than seen on similar comparable structures, leaving the setbacks and distances between adjacent buildings smaller than you find established by the rhythm of historic houses on the street, and that that condition would not be compatible. The plans show an approximate location for a pair of front steps and front setback that appears to be appropriate, but other appurtenances that are reviewed in Historic Preservation Overlay, such as fencing, lighting, additional paving for parking, et cetera, those, as I said, do need to be reviewed in a preservation overlay. They're not indicated on the plans. The side elevations of the new building, primary elevations will be 64 feet long, front-to-back, with six-foot-deep front-covered porches, I mentioned earlier. The primary walls, sort of without the front porch and back deck, are generally, or essentially just long, continuous planes without any breaks or articulation. This would also have a substantially greater massing than is typical of historic buildings. Additionally, you see the proportion and location of windows on these side elevations lacks the consistency in window pattern that you find on historic houses. Here again, those examples in the area showing the articulation of wall planes, either hexagonal or half hexagon bays projecting. There's a second side entrance on Russell Street, although that's a single-family structure. And of course, you see that there's a fairly consistent window pattern on the side elevations of those buildings. The primary exterior material would be brick with an asphalt shingle roof. Additional information is needed on other materials. Those things are typically approved by staff, but they're not labeled on these drawings. Foundation material, porch column material, trim, a railing, which may be necessary. In our analysis, the proportions of the porch height and depth, the roof and projection of the porch are appropriate, but the columns and other structural, the horizontal beam, are undersized, they're slight in comparison to the overall mass of the structure. And another observation of ours is that the paired window in the dormer is shown with a 12-inch mullion, which is twice the width of a typical mullion, including similar dormers on the examples I've shown. In our conclusion, staff is recommending disapproval of the proposed new building, finding the height, width, depth of the building without any articulation on the side walls, and the proportion and rhythm of openings on the sidewalls do not meet the guidelines for new construction in the Edgefield Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay, and that there are other information that would be needed prior to approval on the materials and appurtenances. With our recommendation, the applicant would be encouraged to revise the design to be more compatible in scale, and to submit plans for review next month. And of course, as always, we'd be happy to meet with the applicant, either on-site or at the office, to go over any ideas between now and the next deadline. And I believe the applicant is here, if you have any questions.
Okay. Real quick, the attic, there's attic space, I guess, or is where the dormers are?
I believe the first and second floor plans were submitted, and I don't believe I've seen a second floor plan, although I, or a third floor, excuse me. But I was checking, we were looking at the floor plans in the office, and the second floor plan didn't seem to show stairs leading up to the third, so...
So it's just a, it's just a window?
That, yeah, it's just speculation on my part, but that didn't seem to be usable.
Okay. And did they work with you before on trying to get it down to a smaller, you know, is this after work to get to this?
The applicant is, has done several projects with us before and always been great to work with. This one came in without sufficient time, came in on the day of the deadline. And we hadn't seen, we'd actually reviewed a single-family craftsman-type house on this property a year ago, and that never came to fruition, and this came sort of out of the blue. So we hadn't had the discussions that we normally have before a deadline.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions for staff? Okay, thank you. Advocate like to come forward?
Thank you, I'm Peggy Newman.
And your address, too, Peggy?
1306 Belmont Park Court, Nashville 37215. Well, so he's right, we were a little bit unaware of the new deadline, so we got it right under the wire, and they were nice enough to help us and go through it. The, the problem that we're having is really not changing, we could just, we changed the roof pitch, we changed, everything that they listed that they wanted us to change was simple to change for us. But I think it was that, it was just so rushed that they didn't have time to review it once we changed everything. But, you know, we changed the, one of the problems was the width of the building, so we reduced it to 38 feet to match the one that they had told us, their example. The pitch, we reduced to 612, which is what they recommended. We enlarged the columns, the porch rack, we added, well, should I show them?
Yeah.
The little thingy? So we added the articulation that they asked for, we took out one of the small windows that was in a bathroom. One's in a, one's in a bathroom and one's in a closet. And it's the same thing on the other side, so I'm not showing you both sides, it's just that one. So we, we have a firewall going up, so we actually, until we spoke with Coes, weren't sure what that does to the attic and how far up it goes, and what that would do to that mullion in the middle. But we understand that we can reduce it, so we're reducing that. So we were able to quickly do everything they wanted, but they just didn't have time to review it. So... So. It's the 30 days that's gonna kill me. It's to have to wait another 30 days for my builder. It's just gonna be an awful thing for him.
Okay, I was about to say, did you consider deferring it so that they could review it?
Yeah, so that was the only thing. We were hoping that, you know, based on the fact that we were able to do everything on their list, we were hoping that we could not have to do the 30 days and maybe have you just say, "Well, with conditions that you did everything that we asked you to do." So we, you know, we lowered the house four feet. We, you know, I think we did everything. The windows, the examples that we have, do I press this up like this? Wait, show them. See, like, these windows, this is the house down the street on Shelby. So there's not the rhythm that we were, you know, that, we still have, our windows are the same size upstairs as they are downstairs. They're just, one is in a master bedroom, so we split them apart, and the ones downstairs are together. And like, this is the bump out that we mimicked with the staircase so that we could have the articulation that they asked for. See again, that there's a, that's a staircase window, obviously, the one that's in the middle. Because I think there was some question about, can you have a window in the middle of the house like that, between the floors? So. Wait, oh, I'm missing. What's that? Yes, so see, this is the house across, directly across the street. So it has one over three. So we were hoping that our, you know, our windows are still very evenly spaced, but the ones upstairs were spread out apart because that was a master bedroom, and the ones downstairs are together. But again, if you needed us to change that, we will change that.
Okay. The proportion was a big thing about the whole building, too.
They were worried it was too tall and too wide, so we reduced it to meet the width and the height of the examples that they sent us, that we, that they would like us to follow the forest.
You guys just haven't had a chance, obviously, to review that.
Yeah, we wrote the staff recommendations last week. I think we finished them up Wednesday or Thursday, Wednesday. Maybe Thursday. And so I think these actually, a set of drawings that show what you're seeing up there were sent to us on Thursday as well. But by then, the staff recommendation was already done.
Okay, thanks. Any questions, any other questions for the applicant?
I mean, I appreciate the time. I don't think I've really been asked to do this before. I'm just not really sure it's fair to staff for us to try to make some approval without them giving sufficient time to review it. And just personally, I mean, my thought, I just, I know we're all meeting deadlines, but I would just hate to do something that staff may view as not protocol or something.
Could you do it with their, with, like, the conditions that, like you typically do?
Well, they, they've got their reasons of disapproval, but they're not like specific, like, you know, the roof needs to drop down three feet. So if you dropped it down three feet, we would, that'd be easy. But I think there's, they're generally generic in that.
They ask us to change it to a 612 pitch, from a 912 to a 612. So that's, that's what we did.
Yeah. It is difficult, because even though it looks like, they may say, "It looks like you did it," it's hard for us to, you know, rule on only what we have in front of us, unfortunately. But maybe, maybe we'll discuss it and see what we get. Any more questions for the applicant? Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone in the audience like to speak? For or against this project? Okay, closed public hearing. Discussion. The red one. Right below the red one, I'm sorry.
There is a red one on here.
No, I know, I know.
It says no.
Laughing at me, I know.
You can't tell me that, the red one, that's not gonna happen. Are we comparing in this, an apple and an orange? I don't understand. We have staff saying no to this. It's like, you're right, Richard, it's toto. We don't have any conditions on it. It's no, because it's too big, too fat, too tall, and nothing's right, as I understand it. But then the applicant comes up here and says they've done everything that staff has asked them to do. So have we got an apple and an orange here that we can't see the oranges?
Yeah, there is an orange, but what they've, they were able, they listened to staff, but they came back with the orange after the staff had a chance to review it. So the staff hasn't had a chance to review the orange yet, is what it is. So they, the apple is, the apple is what we're looking at, but the orange is.
What they've delivered, but she's saying, the applicant says that they've delivered, but the staff hadn't had a chance to look at it.
Exactly.
And I think there's, I mean, one other thing to consider, whether this, I think something that the staff certainly would look at and that we as a commission would look at, irrespective of the apple and orange, is the fruit basket here. Which is.
I'm hungry.
There, you know, there are instances in the, in this district where you have large homes that are adjacent to smaller homes. It occurred. And typically, that was, you know, a sign of one person's ability to afford or desire to build whatever. And I think that's an important, as important an issue to consider here, not get caught up necessarily in the specific details of one versus the other. But this house in the context with its neighbors, which I think, I don't think I'd be speaking on a term that the staff certainly considered in their overall analysis of the project, which in turn made them focus on some of the specific details of why it might not fit as a prototype for a duplex in the district. But then it, outside, or in addition to that, we as a commission are charged to consider it in the context of the street, Shelby, immediately adjacent neighbors. And, you know, depending on who you talk to in the various districts in East Nashville, we've gotten that incredibly right or more often than not incredibly wrong in many instances. I'm not saying one way or the other whether it's appropriate. But I don't want us to lose sight of that fact, which is always something for consideration as we consider and intend to see larger structures as opposed to those that are of equal or smaller size to their direct neighbors or even adjacent neighbors. This operative word that appears in some of our guidelines.
Well, I do appreciate that, what you just said. But it sounds to me like we're even a step ahead of that. We can't get to the, I don't think we're where we need to be to do anything with this.
Well, we have an application in front of us, and I think that's what we need to vote on. We either voted up or down, or there's an option that they could defer it. The owner, I mean, the builder could, the architect could defer it.
They could defer it, or they could bring you a new application, which is essentially what'll happen. So either way, you'll see it next week.
What we have in front of us is what we need to vote on.
Correct.
Okay, any, any other discussion? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt staff recommendation for 614 Shelby Avenue.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, 1318 Third Avenue North.
So 1318 Third Avenue North is an application to construct a new duplex structure on a vacant lot on Third Avenue North. The site is within the Germantown Historic Zoning Overlay, but it's outside of the Germantown National Register District. So therefore, staff applied the guidelines, from the design guidelines, from Section 3.0 for new construction where there is minimal historic context or historic context that no longer exists. The structure meets all base zoning requirements for setbacks. The structure is centered on the lot and is located five feet from the side property lines. The front line of the building lines up with the structures on either side of the site. Here are some context photos. So this stretch of Third Avenue North, there is a historic firehouse kind of on the other, to the right of the site. And then to the left are some historic one, one and a half-story residential structures, small residential structures. But across the street from the site, you can see is a very large, non-contributing warehouse. You can see it here better in this photo. And then the bottom photo is looking down the street to the left from the site. So it's kind of a mixed bag on this structure, which is probably why it was left out, or on this block, which is probably why it was left out of the National Register District. The structure is massed so that it appears to be one structure even though it is a duplex with two units. This is in keeping with typical historic duplex structures. Historically, most duplex structures were symmetrical. This design, however, is not symmetrical, but is inspired by a gabled L form with the left unit recessed from the right unit. A gabled L form can be appropriate for duplex since this form often had two front entrances. However, staff finds that changes to the front of the house are necessary in order to make the form meet the design guidelines. On the left side, staff believes that the second-story balcony should be eliminated, as this element is not typically seen on gabled L historic structures. With the elimination of the second-story balcony, the front, the first-floor porch roof should be made to be a more traditional hipped or shed roof with eaves. The porch will also need a thicker porch rack and more substantial posts with a cap and a base. On the right side, the first-store bay is another element not found on houses of this style and scale. Staff asks that the bay be eliminated and the porch be made to be a more traditional porch with a hipped or shed roof with eaves, a thicker porch rack, and more substantial columns with caps and bases. The structure is proposed to have a ridge height of approximately 38 feet above grade or 35 feet, one inch above the foundation line. This is taller than the structures in the immediate vicinity, but is comparable to other historic structures within Germantown. Because this site is located outside the Germantown National Register District where there is little historic context, staff finds that the ridge height is appropriate. The foundation height at the front of the house varies from the left unit to the right unit. Staff asks that the foundation height be uniform for both units. In addition, the drawings don't take into account the slope of the site. The site seems to slope down from the front of the house to the back, and therefore, staff asks that the foundation be a maximum of two blocks high at the front. Here are the side elevations. The house will be approximately 76 feet deep. The long side facade, the long side facades will be broken up with several featured features, including the cross-gable roof form, the dormer, the window openings, the soldier course at the floor levels, and the chimneys. On the two side facades, the front portions of the sidewalls have a regular window pattern that is typical of the sidewall window openings for historic structures in Germantown. Beyond the front third of the structure, the window patterns on the side facades are more irregular and utilitarian in nature. Staff finds this to be appropriate in this instance because these portions of the facade will be less visible from the street and because the site is located outside the Germantown National Register Historic District where there is less historic context. The primary cladding material for the structure will be brick. The foundation will be split-faced concrete block, and the roof will be architectural shingles. Staff asks to approve a shingle collar prior to purchase and installation. The bump-out fireplaces and side dormers will be clad in cement fiber board lap siding with a five-inch reveal. The porches will have wood posts and wood brackets and trim will be used. The materials for the windows and doors were not specified, and staff asks to approve the windows and doors before they are purchased and installed. Here is the rear. The rear does have a rear deck, which staff found to be appropriate since it's on the rear facade and won't really be visible from the street, or will be only minimally visible from the street. And here are some 3D or perspective renderings of the structure. Because Germantown is a historic zoning overlay, the commission reviews all site features. The submitted site plan indicates that two pathways will be added from the sidewalk to the two entrances. Staff asks that the applicant submit more information on the dimensions and materials of these pathways. The site plan also shows a fence, and staff will need to approve the fence materials, design, dimensions, and location. Staff also asks to approve any parking, paving, driveways, lightning, lighting, or other appurtenances. In conclusion, staff recommends approval with the following conditions. One, that the second-story balcony be eliminated. Two, that the porch on the left unit have a thicker porch rack, a hipped or shed roof with eaves to match those of the rest of the house, and more substantial columns with a cap and a base. Three, that the bay be eliminated on the right unit. Four, the porch on the right unit have a thicker porch rack, hipped or shed roof with eaves to match those of the rest of the house, and a more substantial columns with a cap and a base. Five, the foundation line be uniform throughout the structure and the foundation be a maximum of two blocks high at the front. Six, staff approve the asphalt shingle color and all windows and door specifications. Seven, that the utilities and mechanicals be located on the side facade or on the rear, on the side facade beyond the midpoint of the house. And finally, eight, that staff review and approve the pathways, fence design materials, and all other appurtenances. So with these conditions, staff finds that the structure meets the design guidelines, and the applicant is here. But I'm happy to answer any questions before she comes up.
I have one question for you. When you all suggest removing the balcony, what does that do to the door and the windows up at the top?
I would assume that, you know, if there's no balcony, there's no need for a door, so we would recommend eliminating the door. Let me go back to the front facade, just to see. You know, I think the window could remain as is, but that would be.
And that would be fine to duplicate the window at the bottom on the top, okay.
Yeah, you would see that, yeah. As long as the, our main concern would be that the windows on the second story aren't larger than the windows on the first story. But if they're the same size, that would be fine.
But we, we assume, but we need to make sure that that door becomes a window.
Right, yeah. I mean, we would, that would be a decision for the applicant.
Roof, I mean porch rack, I think I know what that means. Is that sort of the fascia board, in essence?
Yeah, where the columns go up into the porch, yeah.
And the third floor or so decks, third floor decks?
And the rear?
Are those?
It's not something you typically see. You may see them in some in Germantown, but because it's at the rear of the structure, we're usually much more lenient in the rear as to what happens. So we found in this instance that it met the design guidelines, because it's, your perception of it from the front won't be so much so.
It appears, I'm speculating on the designer and owner's part, or the developer's part, that the bay, the way the bay and the front porch kind of interact is that there's, and always in a duplex, you have issues of, you know, I kind of got mine over here and you've got yours over there. And if I'm on my front porch, yeah.
Privacy issue, right.
Yeah, that was perhaps, again, I'm speculating, perhaps the intent there. And if we remove the bay and then assume that the porch is partial full, I'm not sure how much width there, I think it eliminates that from the typology or from what they're trying to do. And without, it seems to be a lot that may or may not happen that we're speculating on the front. Perhaps the applicant, when they speak, can, can help us out with that. But that would certainly be an additional concern. It's not, I agree that the bay, with the staff's analysis, that the bay is not necessarily appropriate in the district. But then what goes in its place is probably maybe of equal importance. And it's hard exactly to understand that. We, I think we've worked out more difficult situations in the past, but certainly that would be one that would need some attention as to how those two porch racks, if they intersect, how the roofs work, and how they, if, and how they want to deal with that privacy issue is certainly something that would be a question.
We do have a document, which we've shared with the applicant, and we share with, you know, anybody who asks for it, of both historic and new construction duplexes and how they've treated the front facades. And there is at least one or two examples with the kind of gabled L form. So, you know, we could work with them on that. We've worked with people before on that, so.
As a one-and-a-half-story adjacent structure, which, you know, it looks like some of the forms, it's certainly, there aren't conjectural elements that are taken from one to the other, but some of the forms are similar to that. This being a three-story house, and we have the gable field as masonry that's unbroken facing what appears to be facing south or downtown, I think that will be visible from the automobiles approaching. And certainly, I think the applicant would need to address that. Perhaps even a material change might be appropriate there, and maybe even some, an opening or some series of openings or even a dent. Well, it looks like there's conditioned space inside, so we'll ask the applicant of that as well.
Any more questions for staff? Okay, thanks. Would the applicant like to come forward? Name and address again, too.
Peggy Newman, 1306 Belmont Park Court, 37215. So that's one of them. This is an example a block away that we used because it had a second-story balcony. So that's one of the reasons why we felt a second-story balcony on the front of the house was appropriate. And let's see, this one also is right around the corner, a block away. And this one also has an upstairs balcony with a railing. So we felt like that's what was guiding us, and these are the pictures they sent us. So we were trying to make it like what they were suggesting, but I think that maybe it was a combination or something, I'm not, I'm not quite sure. The bays, like, this one has a very pronounced bay that's a block away. And so we were kind of, we were trying to fit in with the, the house, you know, this type of architecture, and also this, where's the little fire station next door? And our, our house, is it a three-story, or would you consider it a two-story? Two and a half? Okay. Because the bumpouts are in the back. So from the front, it appears that it has, that it's a two-story house. And one of the solutions we talked about, if you don't like the bay and you don't want to approve the bay, is that some of these older homes had it squared off, and that's the dining room. So rather than lose the dining room, we would just, I think we were saying that maybe just squaring it off would be appropriate for that style of home in that day. So, but we, again, we went with the bay because, you know, that shape, because of, because it was right around in that neighborhood, and it's just so hard to tell because it's so commercial, there's so many commercial buildings, and there's such a mix of one-stories and two-stories and different styles of homes, so. Columns and porch rack, we definitely can, we'll change that. And that, the other first, the material, the block, that's just a Revit mistake there. That's supposed to all be the same. So, and we can bring it down to two blocks. That's not a problem either.
Would you be open to incorporating one of the comments that Ben had on the elevation of the gable?
Yes, that's, and I think that's something left out there, too. I don't think that's conditioned space, right, Jason? In that top gable on the left? There's a staircase going up, and then, and the shed dormer is conditioned space, but we, that, we should have a window or a vent, like on the other side. Is that what you were referring to? We need something in that gable?
And even, I mean, you know, just stacking bricks that tall is a lot of bricks.
Maybe a material change?
You know, a material change there, I don't know that it's necessarily required, but it certainly might save you a few dollars, and I think would be appropriate in this instance.
Like hardy, like cement fiberboard?
Yeah, it's used in other places on the project, so I think that would be appropriate.
That would break it up a little, too, and give it some...
And as we're going through the, something, a note caught my eye, if I might ask an additional question or get some clarity, is that on the front in the dormer, it calls out a detail where, I think it says the dormer is a one-foot bump out, and so there's a couple of brackets that are holding a 10-inch band, which I would assume is of a hardy or some sort of trim material. And then it's calling out for herringbone brick infill there, not a typical detail, and I think structurally, you're going to have a real pickle of a... I like the, like, I think it's appropriate that you have that significant change between the second and then the half-story above. I feel like the herringbone brick is an atypical detail, and also structurally, you're going to really kick yourself for putting that on set of drawings if you try to proceed with that, just because the requirement to hold up that weight one foot cantilevered out over the front is, I wouldn't say it's impossible, but your structural engineer will charge you a mighty fee to pull that one off. It may be, it may be easier than I think, but I wouldn't, I'll just say I wouldn't recommend it.
Okay. And since we have the, like, board and battening on the front, that's probably what I would want to do on the side, instead of the...
I would agree that some consistency of detail is always encouraged, so that we don't get a hodgepodge of multiple styles on the house.
So maybe just a soldier course to border the window, or something more simplified? Is that what you're saying, instead of the, instead of the hatch?
I just think, is that actual, my question, I guess, is that if it's actual brick as an infill pattern with, that was either usually typically historically done as a half-timber, where it was a stucco infill on timbers, and with it being a foot set out in front of the house to support, to just hang masonry, that weight of masonry out a foot from the house is a difficult proposition.
Jason, it's wood, isn't this, this little bump out?
And that was what I wanted clarity on. It says herringbone brick, it could have been intended to be another material. I wanted to get some clarity there.
Where, oh, you're talking, oh, oh, I'm sorry, okay. I'm sorry, I see it, yes. It's a little blurry to me. So, so we should just do a board and battening style there, is what, we should just leave it as a board and battening, especially since we're going to the left, you know, onto that right elevation and putting board and battening there?
I would, consistency, consistency certain would be encouraged in that.
It's just a recommendation.
I get it.
It's not part of the...
Yes, okay.
And one more, I guess, constructability question I have that, I guess is somewhat related, is on the, in the porches in the back, you're, there's a screened-in porch, and you have wood, it would appear to be kind of a wood, it was wood frame construction, you've got a wood beam holding up a considerable amount of masonry above. Atypical in the district, and also maybe constructability-wise is, will be a challenge for you, that perhaps the back of the house might appear to be more of a later clapboard addition, and that the brick not engulfed the porches on the back, and that would give you some relief from trying to hold up that masonry over a back porch.
We weren't sure exactly what the guidelines were for how much brick, and if we start at the front on the side, if we had to wrap it completely around the house, or...
I think, you know, in looking at the side elevation, because, again, it's so removed from the street, I think you would, you would do, do well to kind of make a break for the back porch, and that that's a kind of a separate element perhaps to the house, and treat it as such.
Okay.
Any other questions to the applicant? Or comments? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone open public hearing, anyone in the audience? Okay, closed public...
Beano created this motion.
Closed public hearing. First, is there any other discussion?
Yeah, I mean, they showed us some photographs of the, of an example of a bay window, and then an example of a, of a second-story balcony. What are your thoughts about that?
Let me just go back to the pictures, so I can, well, I think here, this is obviously a historic example. I think the balcony is treated differently here because it's a masonry structure, and it's kind of, it's on top of the porch, I think, but just the masonry, low wall, which may not even meet code, I don't know how much down below, but it looks to me like it's almost like a Juliet balcony, even though it's further out, but it's a much more modest-sized balcony, and one that may not even be usable in terms of code. Here, this structure, it's not a historic example, I believe it was... Yeah, it was before the overlay, I think it went through just before the overlay, so it wasn't something that the commission reviewed and approved. So because it's not a historic example, not something that was approved by the commission, you know, we don't really look to things like that for precedence. And then in terms of the bay, I think there's a difference here with this bay because there are a couple of things. One, it's a one-story structure, so it's a very modest-sized structure. Two, it's separated from the entrance, unlike the design that's before you where it's kind of brought into the porch. This is separated out from, from the entryway to the house, and I think that makes a difference. And also, again, because it's a one-story, I mean, obviously you do see two-story, two-story bays, but I think that where it's located on this front facade makes a difference. That was it, yeah.
This is a, they're proposing a one-story bay, correct?
It's a one-story bay, yeah, yeah.
And Richard, I mean, well, the one, it was pointed out, there are even other examples of, before the district was instituted, but certainly infill, there are other infill second-story porches, there's a Charleston-style house that was predated the district, and several other, I'll say several others, there's maybe three second-story porches. I think the thing they all have in common is they're all under roof. And while in other districts, you might find that, you know, you've just got a, in other districts, it's a single-family house, you know, you're going to have this great big tall cornice, and there'll be very decorative, you know, short railing, and there'll be a door out there to access it, and this doesn't exactly, I guess, meet that, meet that standard in the analysis, the overall analysis. But certainly there are examples in the neighborhood of infill homes with two-story balconies. Go for it. I will move approval with staff conditions in the addition of the following, that the applicant submit final documents that address the use of materials in the front gable, the cantilevered gable, as called out in the drawings, a material other than brick in that cantilevered condition be described or resubmitted as an elevation, and that on the historic right side, addressing kind of the blank gable facade at the owner's or at the applicant's discretion to address that kind of blank half-story of gable form, and that the rear masonry extending around the rear above the porch be looked at and pose maybe an alternative to material there to break up that facade additionally, and that also the staff's recommendations be addressed.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, 1318 Third Avenue North.
That was the one we just did, and then 1311 Shelby, we approved under the consent agenda, so that's the end of the agenda, the stated agenda.
It was sitting up here, and I did it again, I apologize for that. Yeah. Okay. Any other business? Okay, we did that in the beginning, okay? All right, so moved.